All right, next we have continuation of a couple -- is it a continuation?
Well, it technically is, but this will be the first time he will he will be presenting before the board.
Okay, when did we have the first session?
The first session was like two weeks ago, but we were too jammed.
Oh.
And it was decided, we didn't have the site visit, remember?
Yeah.
So we had to have, the board wanted to see, it was just crazy.
Gotcha, okay. So this is a continuation. Please come up and tell us what you're proposing to do.
Where would you like me to put the easel, sir?
If you could put the easel right in front of that chair or beside it, that would be great. And we've given this about
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes for presentation. If you could just tell us what you're proposing to do, say in fifteen to twenty minutes, that would give us a chance for questions to come as from our consultants and the board.
Got it.
That would be great. And just so that you'll know who we all are, I'm L. Ailot, I'm the chairman of the board, and the other members, we're in Chadla Nash, went to the bathroom.
David, and Stephen, and Susan.
Okay, you guys don't know.
Susan with the Bible back.
So my wife is Greek, so I'm very interested to know who made the baccalaureate.
Our town planter.
Is that right?
Planner.
It's one of the planners, too.
It's really good. And not too sweet, it's a secret.
Okay.
All right.
I'm gonna start off with existing conditions, if that suits everybody.
Sure.
Okay. So, my name is Glenn Cardozo, I live at 200 South Avenue in Weston. My house, or my wife and I, we live next to Beginnings Preschool. So I'll orient you to the existing site plan that we have here. Beginnings Preschool, which is at 210 South Avenue, is to the west of us, to the rear of us, heading excuse me, south, as you have the Mass Pike. To the east of us, we have one neighbor, and then in front of us, we have South Ave., which is to the north. So residentially, we have one direct neighbor, and then outside of that, we have one neighbor that's at 193 South Ave., and then on the other side, the house is vacant, as we discussed during our site walk. Currently, we have a thirty feet of frontage on South Avenue, we have a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. So after we're done here with the planning board, we'll be going to the zoning board of appeals. As you can see, our existing house, which is about 1,000 square feet, it's about twenty-five or twenty-four feet high, is outside this dotted line here, which is the forty-five foot setback mandatory zoning zoning A.
Outside of it or inside of it?
It is both, sir. It is on, it is on the line.
You point where the house is?
This is, this is the house here. And so this, the forty-five foot setback completely bisects the house almost evenly. About fifty-one percent of our house, since the larger side of our house, plus a two-story, is on the backside, since we have a one and a half story right now, so about fifty-three percent of our house sits on, is non-conforming. So what we're proposing is to raise the house, and then to make our house completely conforming, to move it closer to the street. So I'll show you that. All right, so what you can see here, is we have the forty-five foot setbacks here. This has multiple things on, on here, and the overlay, which I'll orient you to, but primarily what we'll discuss now is the proposed dwelling. The proposed dwelling is forty-five, about forty, excuse me. We have fifty-three hundred square feet, we have forty-nine hundred R-G-F-A, which is what this building will consist of. It'll be completely conforming within the forty-five foot setbacks. It'll be a twenty-five hundred sixty-four square foot home, we'll also have a three-car garage. And then you'll see that the majority of our driveway, which is already existing, will remain in place. With the sole exception of, we will be building a bituminous concrete driveway for a turnaround, once we pull out of the driveway. The only part of our driveway that will be removed will be the previous turnaround, which existed, which is gravel. It'll just be turned into lawn, it'll be seeded and turned into lawn. Outside of that, we'll just be moving the house forward, however, from where we are now, we'll still be the forty-five foot setbacks from Beginnings Preschool, and we'll still have about, almost three hundred and twelve feet, I think, right in there, give or take, maybe ten feet or so, from our neighbor, that is to the east of us. We do have plenty of screening, as you can see from the screening here. So on all sides, we're pretty much screened in, with the exception of some of our non-evergreen trees during the winter time, but we will be building during the spring, so the majority of our neighbors don't have much of an issue. We did get a letter of support from our neighbors, we went before the historic commission, all of our neighbors, about 196, which is the gentleman that lives here, we also got support from Beginnings, we also got support from 220, with Robbie, who came before you about two years ago. And then we also got from 192, which is directly, which is next to our neighbor here, and then across the street in 193. We also got their support as well. And then 197, which is directly across the street from us, to the western side, is vacant right now, and it's up for sale, so there's nobody living there, so we couldn't get any support from there.
So is that where the house to the east is, you were pointing?
So this house here is Mr. Anwadiya, he lives here, he's, he's 196. One house next to them is 192. They have also supported Beginnings, yes, sir.
Is that another structure, just to the?
This is just the garage. This is 196's garage, that they have, they have a kind of a historical house, they have a barn that sits in the back of the, in the back of the structure, so that there's nothing residential there.
Do you know what the square footage of their structures are?
They have, they have a, a pretty good-sized garage, I would say that his R-G-F-A one, so I can only estimate adding, but I couldn't take into account the size of his barn. He does have about a twenty-five hundred square foot house, he also has a two-car garage, which is attached to the house, and then he has a barn that's directly in the back, so if he took, you know, nine hundred square feet and added it for the garage, and then the barn is a pretty good size, so his total R-G-F-A is probably, he had about 1.5 acres, his R-G-F-A is probably right on the ten percent, if not over.
And how many acres do you have?
I have 1.22 acres.
So what percentage are you?
Will be at 9.3% of our R-G-F-A allowable.
Do we require knowing what the R-G-F-A is of all the butters? We don't, that's not a requirement.
What, what we do is typically, in, in a presentation, you remember they go around and look at
Right.
I mean, that's, that's something that we typically ask them to do.
Okay.
Just give us the neighboring size, compare their sizes.
Is that a requirement?
It's not a re- So are residentially, the only one that, the only person, we would still have a twenty-five, sixty-four, forty-seven, ninety-seven, but we'd still have the smallest R-G-F-A of all the, of all of our neighbors, to put it, put that in perspective for you. And then behind us, we have the Mass Pike, and then directly next to us, we have Beginnings Preschool, which I think the structure is right around nine thousand square feet, so we'd be relatively small in comparison.
I think Steve was just asking for an order.
So allow me to orient you to a couple of other things. Here, you'll notice that we have a intermittent stream, which was perennial, we had the study done sometime last year, we noticed that it was dry most of the time of the year, with the exception of, in the spring, other heavy rains, and then melting of snow. So that is an intermittent stream, you'll see that we have the hundred-foot offset set here, on both sides, excuse me, this is the stream here. You have the fifty-foot offset, and then you have the hundred-foot offset, you'll notice that we really took care, when we, when we approached Concom about this, that the whole entire structure was outside the hundred-foot, was that back of the stream. We will have some of the limited work, will be in here, but we've already talked to them about it, they're pretty, they're pretty kosher with it. As long as we put in the A-Dells for erosion control, we're, we're in pretty good shape. And we have really cautioned to meet their expectations for everything that we do, in terms of the building of the structure. The, one other thing to note, is that we have a one-hundred-year flood zone. Mr. Ailot brought up during the site walk, that it's really oddly structured, because most flood zones follow contour lines, however, taken from the, the flood book that we have, this is the flood zone structure here. I really don't have an answer why, I worked with Mr. Dave Burke, the wetlands engineer, and this is what, this is what we found. So I don't have an answer why it's that way, however, this is what it is, we marked it properly on the map, so that we could see it. We have had, at some times, where the, the water will rise slightly above the bank. During those heavy floods, to include melting, when we had about twenty-two inches of snow, if you folks remember that, it was probably the worst I've ever seen it. And at that time, I took out a tape measure, just a measure to ensure where we were, but it really didn't get any closer than, maybe about a hundred and twenty-seven feet, you know, from where we were, and this is the existing dwelling, so maybe it'll be about eighty-seven feet or so. Hopefully, we'll never get twenty-two inches of snow again. Go from there. Outside of that, what we have is, I will also orient you to a couple of other things on, on the map. You'll notice that we have all of our trees properly marked, marked on here, we will not be moving any trees during our construction. So there will be no tree removal. The only thing that we added from the site walk is that we currently have a pretty good-sized rhododendron that sits on the outside of our house, right now, which will be moved and planted on the, on the western side of our house, in order to enhance screening, it's really a beautiful tree, so, poor bush, and we'll, we'll continue to have that. Outside of that, there will be no tree removal conducted during this process, so we, we don't have to go through any of that process. One other thing to note is we have a small shed here, which is already pretty dilapidated, it was pretty much built way back in nineteen twenty-three or so. Hasn't been really cared for, and so that will be raised as well, as you can see, that is on the forty-five foot setback, so that will only enhance our home being more conforming than previously was before. Before I continue, does anybody have any questions?
Is this the plan that you want to use to discuss site lighting?
No, I have.
Oh, you have a different plan?
Yes, sir. That has the actual lighting schedule on it, which is this one here, is that okay?
Yeah.
Would you like me to put this up now?
Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll have questions to come in at the end.
Okay. So this is, this is a blow-up of the actual construction area, I'm just gonna move this over some. This is a blow-up of the actual construction area, we took the part of, removed a portion of the property that is below the intermittent streams, that's not really much any work to be done in that area. You'll notice that along the driveway, we have some, some actual pear trees being planted. We also have some other plantings going in around the home, we have an AC unit and a generator that will go on the back of the home. The generator will be a, just a basic fifty-five hundred, or maybe slightly larger, all we're looking for is for it to run the, excuse me, to run the heating system, and basically the refrigeration, and that's it, we're not really looking for too much there. When we were out there, Ms. Susan took out, probably an inaccurate gauge, but gave us a gauge of how loud it was. We have about seventy-two ambient noise, just due to Mass Pike being there, so we don't think we'll have much issues with the, with the generator, especially the small size that we have. In the blow-up, a couple of other things to note, is that you'll notice that we are maintaining all lawn, maintaining all trees, and then we'll have ambient lighting along, along the driveway, a few posts, and then we'll have a couple of ambient lights that will be, that will light the walkway. We will be using Hinckley's Dark Sky Lights, we'll also be using Hinckley's Dark Sky Light bulbs, and to ensure that we're, you know, in compliance. We're only talking about fifty-five hundred lumens, which is pretty, pretty small in comparison to the size of the property. So we really won't have a large amount of lighting going on. We will have some lighting on the driveway, some lighting on the back door, some lighting over the stairs, and then a couple of, maybe about three lights that go along the driveway. One thing I forgot to mention on the, the last site plan that you saw, on the original, we had two land posts at the driveway, we discussed it. We will only have one land post at the driveway, in order to meet
Meet at the entrance.
At the entranceway to the driveway, so that one land post will be on the western side, in order to mark us, it'll be outside of the, on the opposite side of the mailbox. So that way we're able to just pull in, so we heard, we heard your suggestions, we'll meet that criteria, and we'll move from there.
Do you have fixture cuts of all of your fixtures?
Oh, we do, and I brought those with me, which I can present to you.
When you're?
When you're done.
Okay.
No, I might have left it in the car, but I do have them, and I can, I can assuredly go get them, so just leave the following here. Outside of that, a couple of other things that we discussed when we first started, was I, Mr. Ailot asked about excavation and moving of contour, one of the questions that we did talk with the builder about and the designer, is that we will, any contouring that we do will solely come from excavation of the basement, as you saw earlier. We have an eight-foot basement that will be going under the residential portion of our home, so that will be, any of, all that dirt will be placed in order to meet any contour, so there really won't be very much excavation going on, or as little as possible. We will have some leveling here, but we did keep it at an incline, as opposed to in the turnaround, we, we had it almost at a, at a level place, but we kept it at about a three-degree angle, solely for the fact that we wanted to avoid as much excavation as possible. And our septic system, which is in place, is rated for a four-bedroom, non-garbage disposal septic system. We'll just maintain the same septic system, added Title V by Curtis Septic. They just looked at it, it's in pretty great shape, so we'll just run that straight to the house. Talking in regards to utilities, we do have, this is probably the, the major issue that we'll have, and I'll hit to the major issue in a second. You'll, you'll notice that we have a water line that runs on the eastern side of our property, and we have a, we have a gas line, thank you very much, that runs on the western side of our property. We did have a proposed underground electric, however, in talking with NSTAR, here are the conditions on the electric. So in, we've also gone to Concom on this as well, and we have kind of a continuation on an RDA. If we do, if we go with underground electric, first off, it'll have to be along the driveway, we'll have to trench the driveway, follow the driveway to the house, we wouldn't be able to go either with the gas line or the electric line, solely because we'd be disturbing, we'd be disturbing and have to cross the river, and we'd be disturbing weapons. So if we follow the gravel driveway, wouldn't be, it'd be non-significant disturbance, so we can stay under an RDA as opposed to an NOI. However, in speaking with NSTAR, if we went back, we have two telephone poles, or two utility poles that currently sit on our property now. In order to trench from the start of our driveway all the way back, it comes out to about three hundred and forty feet or so, which is a full trench. We'd also have to do directional drilling underneath the river, and underneath the culvert, and then there's other issues that could come with that as well. So cost-benefit analysis, I mean, you, you're in upwards of like forty-seven, well, excuse me, about forty-five thousand dollars versus just three thousand dollars moving telephone poles. So it's a huge difference in terms of the cost-benefit.
Sounds like a moat barrier.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, we did want to demonstrate to you that we did look into
We've never, we've never permitted above ground electrical before, but not, not three hundred feet of it.
But it exists there, huh?
Yeah, I know.
So that's, that was just, we wanted to express to you that we did look into part of NSTAR's process, that electrician has to contact them. So right now, our telephone pole, I can just show, show it to you quickly, but our telephone pole that goes from the street is actually on the other side of the street. So in order for them to do it, we'd have to move the second telephone pole to the street on our property, put in a transbar under underground, and then trench from there, as opposed to trying to trench from the current telephone pole under the street, which is just not gonna happen. So there are a significant number of challenges to us trying to put our electrical line underground.
Would you go overhead all the way to the house, or would you go overhead from like the last pole, go underground from the last pole on your property?
So that, that's one of the things that we, we did talk about, that would probably be my, my preference, and something that we would talk with you about, and talk with Concom, which is to move, I'm sorry, sir.
How would it work?
So what we would do is, we currently have the utility pole, where's my other?
The fall closest to the house is like breaking the wall.
So you'll see that we have a utility pole that's, that's here, and then we have a utility pole, which is just on the other side of the intermittent stream, which is right here, just on the, so we actually run from this utility pole outside of the fifty-foot wetlands to the western side of the house, and then we could actually trench from here into the house, and that'd be a method for us to use, but we'd still have, at that point, two utility poles on our property. We'd just be going underground from the second utility pole, as opposed to having overhead wires, which currently exist now, from the second utility pole to the house.
But you'd be moving the second utility pole?
We'd be moving the second utility pole into the wood line on the western side of the property.
Is NSTAR responsible for repairing the lines if they're, if, for example, if it's still
They go down on our property. So it's a, it's a shared responsibility, so if it's due to our tree, then we would be responsible for that.
So if it's an act of God, or an ice storm?
Sir, I, I, I would have to get a more legal definition, because it, based upon what they talked about, there is some things where we'd be responsible, and then some things where they would be responsible, such as, if there was just a failure, because it's just that old, then that's something that they would be responsible for, whereas more likely, if there was a snowstorm and a tree branch fell on it, then we would be responsible for it on our property.
So you could be using that generator a lot?
Good, well, we, we have one now, and we've been, considering the winters we've had, we've been burning up some serious fuel, but it hasn't been too bad.
And that's a gas-powered generator?
It is a gas-powered generator. But my preference would be to go underground from the second utility pole, just something for us to discuss later on. Does, does anybody have any questions regarding this? Just move on to the next.
This driveway is gonna be, the, the, you're, you're not changing the driveway?
We're not changing the driveway width, the driveway width that you saw will remain in place, the only time that it's going to change is after we get to right around the seventy-foot mark from the, from the stream, we'll be widening slightly, just to accommodate this bituminous term.
What is the width of the driveway here?
The width right now, I believe, is right around, maybe nine to ten feet or so.
It's real now, yeah.
Okay.
And the reason for that is because we also have to, anytime we increase it, we'd have to go back before the conservation commission.
Yeah, I understand, it would be a big, big deal.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Just to clarify, if the board requested that he do underground utilities, it would require Mr. Cardozo to come back to the planning board for a public hearing, for a special permit for wetland and floodland destruction.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Okay, so now I'll get to kind of what the house looks like, just to, and just kind of Okay, folks, here you have our elevations, to the left, the top left of this document, we have our front elevation. This is what the house will look like here, to the top right of our document, we have the left side elevation, which is essentially the eastern, excuse me, the, yes, the eastern side of the home. You have the, the southern portion of the home, which is the rear of the home, and then you have the western side of the home. The home will be thirty-four and a half feet from top of the ground to the actual roof ridge, trying to maintain, make sure that we stay within the zoning bylaws, which will be an increase of about twelve feet.
Above, is that thirty-four and a half feet above the new grade?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so, but we measured to the, to the existing
Average natural grade, that's correct.
Is it thirty-four and a half?
Thirty-four, from the average natural grade right now.
Before construction?
That's correct.
Okay, gotcha.
So, and, and we, and we're well under about the thirty-seven, so we won't even be remotely approaching that. So again, our R-G-F-A is at forty-nine seventy-seven, oh, excuse me, forty-seven ninety-seven, and we have fifty-three, oh, fifty-three, some odd. So we're, we're right around nine point three percent for our R-G-F-A. Any questions on this at all? Just kind of a, a bissection? I'm sorry?
We're okay.
You okay? What questions do you have, folks?
Well, let me ask our consultants, do you, well, starting with you, Dave, do you have, do you have any comments?
No, I reviewed the stone wall, it was a while ago, but you just cut down the Alfred?
Yeah, sure, I do, it's just the You just hold it up, don't even have to.
So, do you want me to brief it?
So it's just the, under the driveway, it's off to the side, some contacts, so it's kind of just making use of open areas, so it's, you know.
Flipping over, it looks okay?
Oh yeah, it's fine, it's nice and compact, and, you know, not clearing anything for it, or anything like that, so it's along the guidelines of kind of how you want it sited as well.
Can you just briefly go over the landscaping again?
Yes, absolutely. Anything in specific?
I was just looking for, I know it's, I'm just gonna draw my memory, it's no, it's pears.
Yeah, it's primarily pear trees along the driveway, and then the foundation plantings.
Like Bradford pears, like just ornamental, along the driveway?
Yeah, you don't see this?
No, and he's saving all those fabulous maple trees.
Right, so I didn't, there's nothing that
Where are the, where are the pears?
They, they go down the driveway, on the, on the
These PCs here, right down the driveway, right along the western side.
Yeah, so if you drive into it on the right side.
Right.
Not like an LE, but sort of.
There are a couple of fabulous pears.
Oh my god, yeah.
And you're saving that big road.
Those pears are starting out as, what, how high?
They're not big.
Yeah.
And you're gonna spray those hamlocks?
We will, yeah, that's right.
We don't even look at the turnpike, whoa.
It's kind of neat that, yeah.
Ah, it's a great yard, and, really.
Yeah.
So when do you spray those? Is it, is it spraying more?
I think they're doing systemic, like, I have heard that some people don't like the systemic, and that it's expensive, and that actually the dormant oil is really great and cheap, and I guess it's up to you.
March, we've already started reaching out to them, and they said that March would probably be the best time to come out.
I know, I tried to get my guys to do
Is there anything that you'd like me to leave up at all?
No, I mean, my only, my only comment was, we've, we've got to be pretty careful about the foundational layout, because the, the the building is right up on the setback lines.
So you would do the usual foundation
Yeah, we're gonna have, we're gonna need a surveyor to shoot the foundations, just to be sure.
It'll be, you mean, is, can it be our surveyor?
Yeah, we just, we need to have it certified that it's, that the foundation is where
They're registered.
It'll be, it'll be snowing in Hamilton, they've been really great, and we've already staked it out, so we can most certainly do that.
Yeah, the same survey.
Did you cut back your deck, or you, the stuff that it wouldn't go over?
We will be, yes, the six inches that were currently over on the eastern side, and we're just gonna take that whole step, because it was a, a step that went around the whole deck, and now the deck, the steps will just come off the northern and southern side. So there will be actually no, no step there, so we'll actually be like another, since it was six inches over, it'll actually be about four inches on the other side with the removal of that step, so when we go before the CPA or the tollway department.
And then the, the overhead utilities, but then, so a lot of these older kind of odd lots do have that, where they have And then the, the overhead utilities, but then, so a lot of these older kind of odd lots do have that where they have, they bring in a line overhead and then from the last pole to the houses on the ground, that's fairly common in some of them, especially kind of really far deep setbacks or that have to go under wetlands or some of these lots that we see where, you know, they were kind of carved out. There was one down, just down on Lord has kind of the same thing, so that's not that unusual.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem doing that, but in this, especially in this case where there's a big wetlands at Penn.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's a good mitigating reason not to do it, even outside of the cost, not to, not to have to go under the wetlands.
So are you gonna be providing us a plan where you and N-Star want to put the pole?
Absolutely, I absolutely can do that. So it'll be, we'll have to, that will probably take the, just a little bit of time just to work with the electrician because N-Star only works with the licensed electrician, might take me a while to meet yourself, but I will do absolutely.
Good, anybody else have any questions?
Yes, well, I'm curious to see the fixtures.
Any fixtures? I can, I can go get those straight out of the car and I can bring them in here in about two minutes or so.
Okay.
That work for you?
Yeah, potty break. Does that work healthy?
That's on camera here. But we'll, 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 you know what, I might, I might have left them in the other vehicle, but I can show them to you.
That'll work.
That'll work?
Okay.
Power of technology today.
There's fixtures, these are fixtures that have been put in in other properties in town, they're pretty nice fixtures.
Well, you're gonna drop off that arrangement with N-Star and the poles anyway.
Yes, sir.
So you can drop off cut sheets at that time.
I'm sure.
Yeah, somehow they can make it to my file.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that. It's the ones we suggest.
That's correct.
You know?
Yeah.
We pull up, you can watch them. It's that, is it the, like the candle?
That's right.
The second you see it, you would be like, you see them.
Yeah.
Every other.
But those are the ones that are being used on Ten Cherry Road? Something similar.
Someone Tuesday has used them. Back there.
Submitted Tuesday.
There we go. He's done.
Oh yeah, that's, that's absolutely them.
Bingo.
Where did that come from? Oh, there's, there's.
Add to the notes?
There's.
We're looking for a different project.
Yeah, these aren't, these aren't the ones, sir. But this is, this is the one that will go over the garage. This is the one that will go on the, this, these will go on the, something very similar. They'll just be opaque, these are a little bit more translucent.
Yeah, and it's got a hat like this on top of it.
That's correct.
And so the bulb sits within.
That's right.
So this is, these are the same ones that were, are these what, say, are these? I think so.
They're similar, they're equally, it was nice. These are a little more modern looking, the ones he has are.
More fastened.
Oh, okay.
But they're very nice fixtures.
What about the posts?
They are four foot, uh, four foot stone posts and they have the little warning that's, that hangs just off of it, which I can show you virtually.
Yeah.
They sound okay. Well, is the post near the entrance to the driveway the same as the other post?
Like the post light at the?
Are they all the same?
Right or is you wrong?
Wasn't quite big to help the act of me.
It's great. No.
This is all academic.
Right. Exactly.
Just bear with me for just two seconds here, folks, I'm pretty sure I have it. I'm just looking through the email that I sent, I'm pretty sure I have it on schedule.
Oh, you might have sent it to me.
I did.
Yeah, and I just didn't print it out.
That's okay.
Oh, I could do that.
Here, it's right here. Let's give it a few seconds to. That's, that's done now. I'm not, I think it's gonna clear up here in a second.
See that David?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, it's crushed. Yep. You've seen those.
Okay, so what about the posts?
Yeah, what about the posts?
The post will be the, will be this, will be this.
When you say stone posts, what are, what are we talking about?
So you're talking about, about this size and diameter, well, maybe, maybe it looks slightly larger. I'm fortunate to have large hands.
Six, six inches?
About that, right, and it's, it's gonna be about four feet high.
Can we get, can we get some kind of information on the post?
Is that this one?
Uh, that's the one that'll be over the garage. It'll actually be this, the ten path granite post that'll go at the end of the driveway.
Which one?
This, so it isn't a downlight?
This?
Yeah, yeah.
I thought it was just stuck under the side of the, always that, it's a little scotch?
Yeah.
It is.
It's a little scotch.
Well, I hope that the plows don't take that out.
Four feet, bang, 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 bang.
This one would be nice.
Give a little setback on the driveway.
So what, you're talking about granite posts, a solid piece of granite?
Correct.
Like about this big as diameter?
Correct.
So like the size of a, of a bound, maybe?
Bound.
It's nine inches, this is why.
A bound must be what, six?
Four by four.
Four by four.
Smaller than that.
Do we do, is it a twelve by twelve granite post, do you think?
Twelve by twelve, that's.
No, that's pretty big.
That's a pillar.
It's really, it's really small. It's, it's about between four and five inches.
Five inches?
Wow.
Yeah.
And how big is this thing?
That's nine inches, that won't work.
Is it rough?
You mean the plate is nine inches?
Oh no, the scotch, we're talking about.
It has, it has some like rough decorative to it.
Seven. It's seven inches, but not the back plate, it's the front of it. So the back plate would work. How many of these are there?
I think there's about five of them.
Or driveway.
That's correct.
They're gonna be pretty. Yeah, I thought you did too.
Uh, I'm sorry, so.
Gonna be invisible.
So there is one that's close to the house, three along the driveway and then one at the end of the driveway.
Right, right.
Yes, so along the driveway and at the end there's four, so the one at the end of the driveway and then three along the driveway.
They already have a children's center, I think that's.
Would, would it be better to have one of the ones that actually is, that is a downlight?
That's what I would prefer.
The ballered ones?
Yeah.
Something more subtle.
Sure it is.
They, they make them, but they go on the side of a post, stone post, but they, they shine down.
Right.
Yeah, it's a wash, it's a wash rather than a.
Well, if these are dark sky, don't they shine down?
No, no, because the, this is translucent. That's translucent.
Sort of like stained long glass.
Yeah.
But I am, I am gonna add that this, to their west, they are next to Beginnings, where it is, that nine thousand square foot children's center, the parking lot and everything else, so.
And what about, what about to the east?
I'm just saying.
So, okay.
I'm not sure.
Well, there's a house to the east.
But these are.
So, if I may, just to put things in a little bit of perspective, right next to us, we have this huge light that just shines up and lights the Beginnings sign. So in comparison, if you were to just put them next to each other, we're just lighting the, our driveway.
How many lumens does each one of those bulbs put out?
I can, I can tell you on here, on the lighting scale.
I don't know, it just seems like, it just, everything's quite nice.
So the, the scotch puts out three hundred, it puts out three hundred lumens per fixture.
Would you say?
It puts out three hundred lumens per fixture.
And your total lumens are?
Fifty, fifty-five hundred.
We typically, you know, these guys light the driveway itself, don't have any light shining.
Right, but this, that's in areas where we don't have a lot of back and end lighting off the master pipe and the nine thousand square foot. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm, I'm like very, very.
How late is the school open?
I don't know.
It's, it's.
It's lit all day long.
It's lit all night.
It's almost like they don't need these because there's so much background light already, but I just think that I'm working alone and thinking. That's just me. And David?
Yeah.
How are you running, just out of curiosity, how are you running the electrical service wire for these?
That's, we're, we're still trying to figure that out with.
We have to go across the wetlands, don't you?
Well, we're, they, if you, if you look at our, what do you call it, at our line, we can, there's, there's ability. So there may be the ability to run straight from the second utility pole that's already out there, straight under to the, under to this, the one that's on the street. So we're not exactly sure. So we're looking to have it approved now as opposed to coming back to you, but I'm not exactly sure. We may actually do without it.
Could you show us the site plan and put it on the table with the actual locations of the five posts?
Yes, yes, yes. Why do you have to give us the rest?
No, I can't.
So, I'm sorry, that's okay. So you'll see that we actually had two light poles here, you'll notice that we had one, that's one, two, three, and then we just have the ones that were closer.
So it's not five, it's three?
On the post, the other granite posts, okay, all right, so we were thinking five, sorry, it's three.
Where are you gonna put your meter?
The electrical meter?
Yeah.
Will be inside the house.
I don't know how.
See, that's the problem.
Right, so that's one, one of the things that we were trying to work is that we have an electrical.
Then where are you gonna meter those?
I'm not exactly sure, sir. That's, that's.
You end up with a pedestal.
Possible.
Meter.
Actually, with that low wattage, it'd be easy to do.
To put a meter on this?
No, with low wattage, you'd be able to come back easily.
Just a long direct buried wire?
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Very low voltage.
Right.
Low voltage, you're talking about?
Yes.
Are they, well, are these low voltage?
They, they appear to be.
These guys?
They would have to be, three hundred, three hundred.
Yeah, lumens, yeah.
Three hundred lumens.
Does it say, but aren't those low voltage the ones that need a little transformers and all that jazz? Yeah, you know, like.
Well, step down.
Yeah, step down things. Voltage hundred and twenty.
I'm, I'm outside of my, my expertise.
I don't think that's low voltage.
That's not low voltage.
That's line.
What is that low voltage?
Right.
So wait a minute.
That says one twenty.
That's line.
So how is it, how is it, how is it that low a lumen?
Yeah, that doesn't work, the math doesn't work here.
Well, it draws where it draws, I guess.
Yeah, but the, the difference is.
It draws, takes one, it's a sixty watt medium not included, that's a socket.
Have, have we confirmed the, the calculations? Because it looks like it's not a low voltage fixture.
If it's a hundred and twenty watts, yeah, it would translate to a lot more.
Might be rated for that, but not.
It's hundred and twenty volts, not hundred and twenty watts.
Yeah, right.
Hundred and twenty volts, but that's, it's not a low voltage fixture.
No, seventy-five watts.
Transformer somewhere.
Right, no, it's not a low voltage.
Okay.
So you might wanna look into getting low voltage fixtures.
And those are different, and those are the ones that you find that are the little half shell, clamshell things that can stick on the top.
Right, this is what Alan said, you know, on the post.
Right, they, yeah, they're classified.
But what, what we're hitting here is a discrepancy between the lumens calculation in the, in the electrical service for the fixture, which is, which is inconsistent with that level of.
Well, how many, how many watts will be in a three hundred lumens?
It was the volts.
How many?
Volt thirty.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five?
Twenty-one.
Is it twenty-five watt incandescent bulb?
Incandescent bulb is above, is about twelve to fifteen lumens per watt.
Okay, I'm glad.
Twelve to fifteen lumens per watt, so seventy-five times twelve to fifteen.
This is what I mean, yeah, this is.
Is?
Well, this is sixty, this is, one of these, one of these is raised, you gotta figure out which one you're doing, I think.
Yeah, which one, are you doing the smaller one probably, okay.
This is the sixty.
So it's sixty.
Sixty watt bulb?
Yeah.
Yeah, socket.
So.
How, how, I wasn't on the sidewalk, it's pretty.
So sixty times fifteen is nine hundred lumens.
That's a lot more than.
Sixty times twelve is seven hundred and twenty lumens. So, so where does it say these are three hundred watts?
That's, I mean, I can only go by the, the sheet that we have here, sir, which Ms. Angela Kearney from Landscape Designs created.
Let's say they're nine hundred.
Just on granite poles. DSLM forties, three hundred.
Still at all.
It's the under.
Yeah.
Way up.
But they're, but they're brighter fixtures than.
DSLM.
But these are, but also these are fixtures you see all the time.
Yeah.
Okay, you know what? These are the DSLMs.
That's the bulb.
That's the bulb, okay. Oh, here the fixture, sorry. Yeah, she has the same lumens regardless of whether they're seventy-five watt or sixty watt.
Is that because they're.
Or a hundred watt. So I don't think that this is correct. Yeah, because this one's a hundred watt, the first one's a hundred watt, this one is seventy-five watts and this one is sixty watts, but she has the same lumens for each fixture.
The only thing is, I believe that she pulled these straight from the site because these are lumens per fixture.
Well, we're just looking at one.
That's what we're looking at.
One thing here.
Aren't we?
This is, this is the, the cut sheet that we took from the site, but there should be, there should be a portion that tells us what the lumens are, I would imagine, I don't know.
It's a direct translation.
They're giving you the wattage.
I see. So we're just translating, we can translate that directly into lumens.
So is this the bulb that, what, oh no, that's, that's this one here, that's that one that they have given you the lumens here, see, two fifty, but that's a different.
That's a low, which, I guess is much lower.
Oh yeah, me. Oh, you know what? Yeah, they're putting the same kind of bulb in each of these things.
Yeah, I think that he said it was special.
They're calculating the bulb.
Low bulbs.
Rather than a fixture, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay, that's not so good.
Well, why don't we do this? Could you go back and get, because what she's doing is she's putting the same bulb in every fixture, okay? So she's actually not, not calculating for the fixture rating, she's calculating for the bulb.
Okay.
So could you, if she could change the table to calculate for the fixture rating?
Got it.
That, you're gonna wind up with higher lumens numbers?
Okay.
But my guess is you're still gonna be under the.
So the fixture.
Okay, but it's just, just for the record.
Got it.
Uh, and my other suggestion.
Can I say this back? I understand it, which is, and we, our consultant currently has it rated for the bulb as opposed to the fixture, so just change the table to be rated for the fixtures. Got it, okay.
But the other.
In case the next owner puts in a different bulb. Got it, okay.
So these are not really dark stack of light fixtures, it's the bulb that's dark.
Well, no, but the, those are frosted.
They're frosted, but the bulb is not up into there.
No, it isn't, but, but we, we accepted fixtures like that before. My other suggestion though would be that if you could work out whether these fixtures, you can actually install them or not.
Okay.
A, a detail?
Some, some, some tell us how they actually are gonna get installed.
Okay.
Because right now, it's not clear, they're not low wattage.
Okay.
They're, they're, they're ordinary, they're made for incandescent bulbs, so it's not gonna be, it's not like a low voltage fixture. So it's a, maybe a different ballgame with respect to the wetlands.
Okay.
Uh, so it would be helpful to know, why approve something that can't be installed?
Got it.
So if you could get an answer on how they're gonna be installed, that would be helpful. I don't think, do people think we need to continue the hearing for that or can?
No.
Can he just?
No.
Bring that information into, to Betsy?
Yeah, it's just the lighting would be nice to do this.
If, if you, if there's a strategy for installing them, then we can, we, well, we can, we can consider it when we're looking at the, at the draft decision.
Okay.
I, we would still encourage you to, to do some kind of lighting on the granite post that was a little more subtle.
More downlight, less scotch.
Okay.
Yeah.
It might actually survive a little bit.
Yeah, I think it will survive a lot.
Especially down low, boy, bad, big, deep storm.
I have a long driveway myself and it takes a beating in the winter from the snowplow, so. Anything you could do to lower the risk.
We consider that, that's, that's.
Those would just be the low voltage lights, just the three.
Yeah.
The three low voltage lights.
Yeah, the three.
Along the driveway.
The driveway.
Oh, we're talking about, I got it.
The rest, fine.